We ask you to keep your comments or questions to three minutes. And if you're speaking about a specific agenda item, we ask you to keep your comments germane to that topic. Anyone who wishes to speak must be called on by the mayor. You may make a statement or ask questions, but it's not an opportunity for back and forth across the table. And anyone who speaks out of turn, discusses non-german topics, goes on too long, may be interrupted and asked to adjust your comments or behavior. First topic is to approve the agenda. I assume the agenda is satisfactory to the members of the council, and so we'll consider it approved. Next, we have general business and appearances. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to address the council on any topic that is not on tonight's agenda. And we limit comments to five minutes, and we will start to see if there's anyone in the room that'd like to be heard. Steve?
I'll speak to the lighting, because I think it should come off the, the bridge lighting should come off the consent agenda for discussion. I was at the design review committee's meeting where concerns were raised about an overlit bridge and folks coming off the end of it being night blinded by the overlit bridge onto a dark section of the bike path, possibly creating a safety issue. Steve Everett candidly mentioned that the dark places where you used to be able to take a pee, absent public restrooms, will now be super lit by these bridges, further exacerbating the restroom problem. I thought it was a true, but candid, but true. How that, the trellis, supposed high, five foot high trellis, five foot high extension off the existing rails trellis is to be attached to the bridge, hasn't been reviewed by Public Works? You know, are we going to weld it? Are they going to just be relying on nylon ties? What, what method are we using? I think that something as dramatic as putting a huge lit trellis over top of a bridge that was already reviewed and permitted for aesthetics and view impacts shouldn't be recklessly done on consent agenda. That is, if you're... So those, those are, I'm not going to speak now to the Turtle Island, but generally, Country Club Road interim uses require more consideration and planning than we have exhibited. Y'all have basically turned the whole thing over to whatever Mike Miller wants, and he's heading us for a train wreck. But if we, we have removed the coring and, from the contracts with VHB, in order to save money on the last round, but that coring still needs to be done to determine what size of buildings can be grounded where on that property. And if water and sewer have to go in and blasting has to happen, that needs to be thought of ahead of time before we're traumatizing children with bombs, you know, shaking the ground that they're trying to play on. The pesticide issue that I raised at Country Club Road, the brownfield poisons that are there have not been addressed. I don't know if they're addressed in the lease. The lease wasn't in the packet. I think it's premature for y'all to be voting to approve a lease that wasn't prepared last Friday in the packet in time for scrutiny. There's no electronic copy available for me to use tools to try to study it quickly here. But in, just in process and fairness, you should not insert something as complex as that into the agenda at this late date and approve it on the same night. I've made a records request for the resignation letters from the, anybody who's resigned from any of committees and what their cause are and any back and forth between staffs. Apparently, our lack of staffing is the reason that it's going to take 10 days, they're claiming the extension of 10 days. The fact that people aren't trained in public records law, or that our files are not organized, is not unusual circumstances that merit a 10-day extension. Those 10-day extensions are for unusual circumstances, and these are usual circumstances, those records are required to be produced in three days. So, the fact that you're overlooking these things, no matter how many times I bring them up, you've become, you know, complicit, or the staff starts to think, oh, council will give us a free pass, we can ignore these obligations, you know? And for a lawyer who, you've got a higher onus on you to adhere to this. So I'll stop there.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the room who'd like to be recognized? Seeing nobody, is there anyone online? Oh, Zach Hughes. Thank you.
Just a second, Mr. Mayor. Let me just grab what I need to grab in front of me here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Zach Hughes, Montpelier. I'm going to read a quick letter in my time tonight from the Montpelier homeless, homelessness task force. On June 30th, Governor Scott's executive order 0325 will expire. The order allowed most vulnerable households in Vermont to remain in hotel shelter even if they used up their 80-day eligibility. This includes families with infants, children, people with complicated medical needs, people who require oxygen, people in wheelchairs, people who are bed bound. There are not individuals who will, these are individuals who would not survive outside. When this order expires, we will see our most vulnerable residents evicted to the streets to try to survive on their own. In the Berry District alone, this includes about 158 adults and 34 children. The state had ample time to support these vulnerable medical and fragile individuals and families moving into alternative, safe, affordable, or appropriate housing. It appears this did not happen, and these individuals will once again be without shelter on the street of Montpelier and other towns in the area. As members of the Montpelier homelessness task force, we are extremely concerned what will happen to these individuals who are our neighbors and some of whom are residents of the city. While it was the state that was tasked with providing support needed to identify alternative housing, since that did not happen, it is now incumbent on the city to find even temporary alternative housing to avert what is sure to be medically dangerous, sorry, medically dangerous situation for many of these individuals. We ask the city to do whatever is needed to address this emergency before it becomes a non-preventable. Thank you very much. And I also want to take a moment and wish Bill Frazier, thank you for his 30 years of service. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thanks, Zach. Anybody else on the line?
Zach?
Tim German, is that you?
Yes, it is.
All right.
Hi, my name is Tim German. I'm from that eastern part of Montpelier that you all jettisoned in 1848, East Montpelier. But I'm coming here tonight to invite you to the 200th anniversary of General Lafayette's visit to Montpelier. And that happened on June 28th in 1825. And we will be reenacting some of the words that were spoken. This was, at the time, the largest thing that ever happened in Vermont. Came in through Windsor, went all the way up to Burlington. All of it happened within two days, but Montpelier was the only place where he stayed overnight. So, we will be, we have a character from the American Friends of Lafayette, who is an actor, who will be in costume, very knowledgeable, and Lafayette will interact with some of the characters from Montpelier at the time, including Governor Van Ness and Elijah Payne. We have people playing their roles. So, this will be at four o'clock this Saturday, right in front of the old State House, which is now right in front of the Supreme Court. And then we will move into the Vermont Historical Society Museum for a short lecture on Lafayette and slavery. He was very much anti-slavery, pro-women, pro-native rights, all, all good things, in our opinion. So, that will take place at around, it'll all wrap up at about 5:30, so about 4:00 to 5:30, and we will have music there from about 3:00 o'clock on. So, if you're in town, come out and enjoy the festivities.
Thanks, Tim. As I recall, not only will I be there, but there are a number of other former mayors who are going to be joining us, is that right?
Yes, and you will be leading Lafayette from where he actually stayed, which was the old Cadwell House, which is now the Blanchard Block, over to meet everybody else on the green in front of the Supreme Court. We look forward to seeing you and all the other mayors.
Thanks, Tim. Peter Kelman?
Peter Kelman, Mountain View Street, District 3. I attended the Monday Planning Commission meeting, and I asked Mike Miller whether the city plan that is being presented to you for approval and hearings, which I guess will be next, next meeting, is the website or the PDF version? And he gave me a very confusing response, saying it was the website, which includes a PDF version in additional resources. Now, I hope you guys are going to hold out for the PDF version to be the official version for three reasons. One, I don't believe that we're going to have the financial resources or the personnel to maintain a web version over the next few years. It's just not, it's not, you know, his guy Nick might know the, I forget the name of the program, but there's a lot more on that website than that program. All of the text in the, you know, the, the, whatever he calls it, you know, the narrative stuff that was put in there by the consultants that are no longer, the SE group that are no longer a part of it, that's not something that I think Nick is going to be able to go in and fix and change if things change. Secondly, the, the PDF has to be useful. I asked him, is it going to be able to be printed out legibly in an eight and a half by 11 format? And he said, yes. And then he backtracked and said, well, no, it won't be eight and a half and 11, it'll be 11 by 17, or some other numbers. He said, and if you want it, we can print it out for you. That's, I don't think that's acceptable. And I brought this point up again and again. It needs, it needs to be something which can be easily edited, which a PDF can be easily edited. It needs to be something that can be printed out and people can put, you know, on their printers, and eight and a half by 11 is what most people have for printers, for, I mean, and it needs to be legible. Also, it was suggested by Thomas, whatever his name was, I'm sorry, I just rushed in here, so I don't have any notes in front of me. It was suggested way long ago that the table of contents should be hyperlink, so if you wanted to go to chapter such and such, or section such and such, you click and you go there, which is very easy to do, but Mike said they didn't have the capacity. Now, Mike claims that this web version is going to be the latest, greatest thing since sliced bread. And one of the things he mentions is, because it's going to include videos. It has one extremely amateurish video on it, and you know darn well that putting more videos in there is going to cost money that you are not going to agree to. So what is the point of this? The point is that six years ago, seven years ago, Mike fell in love with, you know, the idea of having a web version, and he stuck to it, and you guys have let him stick to it. I really hope that you will say, no, the PDF version has to be the official version. It's the one that will be able to be maintained, it's the one that will be able to be edited, it's the one that will be able to be corrected, and, and, and the web version will not be. It's not like falling off a log because Mike has this guy Nick. What happens when Nick disappears? I, I really hope you will ask him again what his intentions are, because I talked to Jim Sharon about it, and he said Mike assured him that both of them would be official version. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Peter. Is there anyone else online who would like to be recognized? And nobody else in the room, so we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the consent agenda. We are taking items E and G off the consent agenda. And with that, is there a motion to?
I would, I just got a quick question on D.
Okay. We'll, we'll take items D, E, and G off the consent agenda and...
I'll move the rest of it.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thanks. Jim's, D comes first.
Go ahead and have Adrian go first.
I was, I was just going to do them in order.
Okay.
So, D, D comes first.
Okay. I just have a, I don't know if there's somebody here from the lighting department that's gonna, that knows about that. I just was wondering if, if the lights prove to be blinding, are there levels that, you know, like it can be turned down a bit? That's all, that's my question. So, I don't know if there's anybody here that can answer that, but...
Do you know the answer? I'm not asking you, Steve. Anyone from the administration, Kurt, you're here.
Kurt Monica, Director of Public Works. So, you know, I don't believe that there's like a dimmable setting on the lights, these are LED lights, and, you know, the final selection of, you know, the brightness of the intensity of the bulbs hasn't been selected, so we certainly can work with Montpelier Life's contractor to make sure that they're not overwhelming.
Thank you. Thanks, Kurt. With that, do you move the approval of item D?
I do.
We, we already heard you, from you on this point.
No, you didn't hear me.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'm going to just comment on this topic, because you took it off the consent agenda.
All those in favor, any discussion?
I'm, I'm going to comment on this. Jack, you're, you're violating your own policy.
Any opposed?
Jack.
Okay, item D is approved. Moving to item D.
I'm going to speak to the lighting on the bridge.
You're out, you're out of order.
It blocks, no, you're out of order.
You're out of order.
It blocks the view of the State House. You haven't considered this, it did not meet design review's approval, and that every time we call in our lighting contractor for the bike path, it's $1,800 daily.
We're going to take a recess.
You, you need to hear me out on this topic. You took it off the consent agenda, it's open for public comment. You need to hear me out on this topic. You took it off the consent agenda. It's open for public comment.
Session, we're moving now to Item E on the consent agenda, the DPW union contract. Jim, that's also you.
Yep. First of all, for those of you who don't know, I sat on the DPW negotiating team as a member, as a city council representative member with the rest of the team. I never missed a meeting, and now that we have settled, I would like to make a report on what I saw. And there's two reasons why I wanted to sit on it. One is, I wanted to make sure it was fair to the people and to the employees. I like a balance. And I think it really was, first of all. The other reason I sit on it is, I wanted to be the eyes of the council so I can give a report to my fellow counselors as someone who's seeing it through the eyes of a counselor, which none of you are there to see this. So, this is your chance to hear it from one of your own who doesn't look at it from the eyes of the staff, who looks at it through the eyes of a counselor. And so, that's what I want to report on. I want to just say that, first of all, I want to talk about the leader, Kelly. An exceptional job. She, I mean, really, I can't say enough about the job that Kelly did on this. She just maintains her cool. She just handles it beautifully. Very, very impressive. Supported by a really good team of Tanya and Sarah, who know when to speak up and support her. The three of them are like a well-oiled machine. I'm honored to be part of them. In this case, Kurt was the one, was the department head. Kurt knows his department very well. Knew when to put in his say. Did an excellent job. I mean, the four of them is a fantastic team. You know, I said a few things, but I was more there, like I said, to be eyes for the council, eyes for the people, to see it for myself, what went on. And again, I'm very impressed, and I wanna...I wanted to speak now rather than during my council report when no one's listening. I wanted the people to hear what a good team we had running this. And kudos to all of them.
Thanks, Jim. Is there a motion to approve Item E ratification?
I will gladly approve that.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. Next, Item G. The Mamba proposal for Country Club Road.
Yes, so I just wanted to pull this off the consent agenda when I was looking at the proposal. Thank you, Mamba, for putting that together. It was very detailed and informative to showcase what you'd like to put up at the Country Club Road property. The one question I just wanted to double-check, because they used Concept A map in the proposal. And on the east side, I don't know if I got that direction correct. On the right side, where it's the recreation land, and at the top, we originally had townhomes, and there was like a natural area. But in the revised plan, there's also the recreation area up there, but we also added a medium-density housing. And so, I think there is overlap in their proposal. So, I just wanted to understand, you know, is there an overlap? Is there a conflict in our updated plan? And what the next steps would be for that pump track?
Steve, Alec, do you think you should be the one to answer that?
Yeah, I probably would be best suited to answer that. Thanks for bringing it up. Alec Elsworth, Parks Director. There are folks from Mamba here too, but I'll answer just from the staff's perspective and not speak for them. There, you know, those, the blobs on the map, is there a more official name we're calling them than blobs? I don't know. The development area. You know, I guess, yeah, there are two things. One is, there, you know, those are, as we discussed, like purposely vaguely drawn. So, you know, as is like, I think there's a specific place that the pump track would like to land, or, you know, that Mamba would like to land it. And it's kind of like in between, it's like right on the edge of the recreation zone, and then the like undesignedated space, and then like the nearest edge of that development area. So, you know, I'd say it's not like squarely in the middle of a place we'd like to develop, which makes me feel better about it. Two is, you know, baked into this proposal is the understanding that this infrastructure would have to move if, you know, if the area that it occupied ended up being developed for housing. So, that's been our understanding from the beginning. When we did our staff review initially, when Josh was still on, he brought this up. You know, that was like, oh, well, we have been discussing some, you know, some housing on that east forested parcel. And so, that was known to us. And I think it's sort of in the spirit of like, you're taking advantage of the, you know, property while it's there in advance of, you know, the housing going in. And if it can be worked around, then great. And if it has to move, that's fine. Trails can move, and pump tracks are just piles of dirt. You know, some people rearrange their pump track every few years to make it more interesting and different. And then, I guess, my third point would be just where, you know, that housing is, is sort of on like one of the more further-flung bits of housing. And so, it would be like in the later stages of our development. So, I think we're, you know, we're a couple steps away from developing that area of housing. So, just give us a longer time window that it wouldn't be a potential conflict.
Thanks, Alec. Are there, is there anyone else from the Mamba who wants to clarify this? Okay. You satisfied, Adrian?
Yeah, no, I think that'll...
I know, I'll add too, I did reach out to them and ask them to make a map with the new map, and they did. You know, it was obviously not in time for the meeting packet, but we can share that with you after the meeting. So, thanks to the folks who put that together so quickly.
Thanks, Alec. Peter.
Peter Kalman, Mountain View Street. I just have an equity question, concern. Mountain biking is a relatively expensive activity. Much more expensive, I believe, than skateboarding. Has there been any thought given to having a skateboarding facility up there? Something that more kids from families that aren't as well-heeled could do similar things, but with skateboards?
I can answer that if that's helpful. Thanks, Peter, for your question. I think in this case, you know, this is a proposal brought forward by a community group that supports this activity. And so, we don't have a proposal on the table from a skateboarding group, although I'm sure that, you know, as staff, we would entertain that if somebody came forward and was willing to fund it and maintain it. You know, that's the deal with this pump track is, it's, you know, basically, there's no staff lift. It's just, you know, Mamba is proposing to do this, and we're proposing to provide the space. The second thing is, it's, you know, pump track is for kids. It's sort of a fun, you know, like four-year-olds up to teenagers. So, if you go to the Waterbury, like rec fields, they have a pump track that's adjacent to their rec fields. And, you know, it's common to go and, you know, have one kid in a soccer match and another kid riding the pump track. And it's just a nice...it fits in really well with the landscape up there, you know, as far as having rec activities and providing something else that's fun for folks to do.
Alec, is the pump track at Coming Street getting much use?
It is, yeah. It gets a ton of use. And we, you know, we're kind of constrained on that site. It's a small site. But, you know, we, I think, the best example of the way it gets used is we had a whole summer camp spring up based off of that pump track. The time to ride folks, starting last summer, maybe the summer before, you know, ran weeks and weeks of summer camp, and their home base was the pump track. So, they would use it for hours at a time, including trails.
Cool.
Arthur, it's, Arthur is here. He's the chair of Mamba.
Arthur.
Hi, my name is Arthur Fulcher. I live on Cliff Street in Montpelier. I'm also a board member of Mamba. I just want to speak briefly to the intent here, which is that we really want to provide opportunities for youth in Montpelier to have better recreational opportunities. Peter's point is well-taken that it is very, that mountain biking tends to be a very expensive sport. Having the facilities to provide access is one way that we can kind of reduce that barrier and give opportunities to people who live here already. We see the opportunities at Country Club Road as being really open to the kind of flexible nature of the kinds of trails and pump tracks that we would like to be able to create for Montpelier residents and beyond, and specifically provide opportunities to youth that don't exist currently. Today, we have a wonderful little pump track at the north branch. It's a great facility and provides an enormous amount of use, but it doesn't give a lot of opportunities to riders who are older and have more experience and want to grow their skills beyond what that pump track can offer. What we see at the Country Club Road is that there are opportunities for riders who are more experienced, who can continue to grow their skill set. And it sort of fills a gap that we have, that we've been unable to figure out where that can, where we can create opportunities for people to do that. So, we're really hoping to see the Country Club Road as an opportunity to provide more options for people in Montpelier and beyond, and specifically providing our youth with more areas where they can be interested and engaged and creative in the ways in which they are riding. Thank you.
Thanks, Arthur. Chair would entertain a motion to approve Item G.
I...someone?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to say I think this is an awesome project, and I think it's really great. I think it's an amenity to the community that frankly will help potentially attract other kinds of housing development on the site. So, I think it's really great.
I agree. I think it's great. It's working with the characteristics, natural characteristics of the area. I think it'd be great. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Moving on to Item Six, Turtle Island Lease Agreement.
So, I'm gonna just give a brief introduction. We also do have members from Turtle Island here, and they can come on up to the table if they'd like. Then I'll have them introduce themselves. And so, on your tables in front of you, there is a pretty close-to-final draft agreement. There are a few pieces that we're still kind of working out. In addition, there's also a estimate from Connor Contracting for an HVAC system. So, this actually came forward today, but we feel that it's important to include in the discussion today so that we can get sets of what we want to do going forward and potentially include it in the final version of the lease. So, I'm gonna have the Turtle Island folks introduce themselves first, and I'll go through the terms, and then we'll take some comments and questions.
I'm Phoebe Stone, co-director of Turtle Island.
And I'm Mark LaRosa, president of the Turtle Island Board of Directors.
Thanks for coming.
And so, just for your benefit, we have been negotiating lease terms since we got the RFP back, and they were selected to work at the property. We've also worked with our team in the city, so the community services divisions and planning, to kind of work through this lease. And Bookmark and Phoebe have been involved in that from the beginning. So, without further ado, I'm just gonna go through some of the basics of this lease. So, what this calls for is the lease of 4,200 square feet. That 4,200 square feet will be renovated by Turtle Island, and there's some pretty intensive renovations that will need to happen. But for this base lease, it's 4,200 square feet. For the term, what we're seeking at this point would be a 10-year term. There are also provisions within this Section 2 that would allow for an additional five-year term. But if the council will consider, Turtle Island would like to be considered for up to 20 years total. And the reason for that is the loan that they would need to take on the renovations is for 20 years. And so, they just want to make sure that they would have access to that space. There are requirements within this language to review the rental agreement in terms of costs associated in the sixth year. So, we would negotiate that then. The other pieces that are in here, as we move into Section 3, are identified as just sort of the cost associated. They are looking for a break in the lease cost for the first year as they get up and running. I want to talk a little bit more about that as it relates to the HVAC system and the investments in the building that we'll need to do as a city. So, you can kind of see how that rent is broken down. This also includes some common or play scape area, which is identified in the exhibits. This also does take into account as rent utilities. And so, it's $2.30 per square foot, or $9,660 per year. This is based on their current space. We don't have a real estimate on that building with the square footage for all of the utilities. And so, what we would be doing is, we would be looking at the utilities going forward in the first year just to see, you know, how that goes. So, we would be doing a true-up. The other piece here highlighted in blue that I wanted to indicate is that we would be looking to potentially switch over the utilities completely to them. The goal is for the utilities to be net neutral. So, as we work through this, we'd be looking to transition that as soon as we can. But we'd also be looking for energy efficiency projects as we move along. And then, towards the end of this section, there's language that allows for improvements to infrastructure. And so, the Connor item that's on your tables is associated with upgrading the HVAC system from what is currently there. We have had staff onsite with Connor Contracting to take a look at that. And I feel like at this time, it's really important for us to consider that as part of this renovation. And so, that would be considered sort of the city's, within the city's purview. And so, what we would be looking to do is potentially have a reduction in rent to cover that cost. And so, I'll get into that a little bit once I've gone through the rest of the terms. But I just wanted to kind of put that forward, because that's a new item that has come up that we want to discuss before we finalize things. So, Turtle Island would be looking for early access to the building. So, at the signing of this lease, then they would get in there and start to do their renovations. They've already been in the building with their contractor to review what's needed, but then this would really touch off that renovation project. One of the other key pieces here, there's a clause in here for right of first refusal. So, this indicates the woodworker space. But I also will note that there is maybe potential for additional space at this location. In the terms prior, there's also some reference, $2,100 annually for the dirt lot that they proposed. And so, there's some options there, like potentially yurts, or, you know, expanding their program on that site, or maybe within the existing building. So, I just want to also put that kind of on the table. That's not expressed here in this lease, but I just wanted to let you know that might be a future ask. We're still vetting that internally. Then, just moving along down the line here, another item just to consider is, this lease does accommodate 30 parking spaces and does sign 14 of those parking spaces for very specific use between 8:00 AM and 9:00 AM, and then 3:00 PM and 4:00 PM. The next section just really identifies the repair and care of the building. Section 12 identifies alterations and improvements, along with 13 and 14 improvements in site plans and signs. And so, we're all squared away there. And then, the utilities have been addressed in Section 3. And then, a lot of this other language is boilerplate. But what I do want to highlight as something that we're still, you know, working through is the insurance and the addendum. And so, we're just looking at those coverage limits, just to make sure we're in alignment. We typically have a pretty standard coverage limit. We're working to just make sure that that is what we should put forward. Our insurer did recommend that we maybe enhance that. And so, we're working with Turtle Island to sort of sort what that level looks like. This is at the enhanced level currently as drafted. But there may be, depending on, you know, where we arrive between the two insurers, an agreement that may look a little different, but certainly maybe above what we would typically ask just based on the use of that space. So, those are the terms in a nutshell. And before I kind of turn it over to Phoebe and Mark to offer comments, I do want to turn your attention to the Connor sheet here. So, here, this is a budget or an estimate, you know, sort of identifying what would be needed for the HVAC system. And so, what Turtle Island would be looking for for consideration is that they would do this work as part of their renovation. And what we would do is give them a reduction in their rent. And so, some of what we've talked about is that it would be $2,000 per month reduction, so $24,000 per year until they reach this $100,000. So, the city would not need to pay for this cost, and we would get sort of the upgrade to the HVAC, and they would get the benefit of the utilization, and it could happen now. So, just open for consideration. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Phoebe and Mark for any other comments associated with the lease or just comments in general.
Thanks, Kelly.
The first thing I would like to say is thank you, Kelly, and everybody else.
Could you try to keep your voice up to...
Oh, sorry. I would like to thank Kelly and everybody in the city for how hard we have all worked on getting this to happen, and the city council for allowing this to happen and for it to happen in pretty fast order. We did receive a very tight deadline to move out of our current location that therefore is a firm deadline where we were trying to get this lease finished. So, we do appreciate, you know, your patience and your help. And we've been meeting twice a week with Kelly and friends, and it has been a great working group.
I'm not sure if we have anything to add beyond what Kelly said. Like she mentioned with the yurts, which is part of the business plan. We're working with the planning department to get those planning requirements in order because there are some restrictions that we'd have to figure out. And then, as Kelly mentioned, we would be interested in expanding within the building if that's a possibility. So, if you have any questions for us.
Thanks.
We should add that this initial 4,200 square feet would hold something like two-thirds of our current capacity at Elm Street. So, we are hoping, the reason we came up with the yurts idea was to add capacities. But we were made aware that some of the other rooms inside of the building may be available to us, and that would be our preferential way of expanding our footprint within the site. It would allow us to maintain our current enrollment, our employees, and also just with that extra capacity, it's more revenue for us to be viable on the site. So, that is where that has come from.
And you don't have the Worcester option anymore, right?
We do not have the Worcester option. That, the amount of space available to us was reduced during the negotiation process, and just the numbers didn't add up. We lost two rooms, one room? One room, but a lot of tuition gets lost with that room, and we just couldn't make it work.
Okay. I, Kelly, I've got a couple of questions relating to the utilities and the utility separation, especially with the improvements from Connor. Is this HVA system going to be installed and serving only the Turtle Island area of the building?
So, we've got Chris Lumber here. He is our sustainability and... He is our Sustainability Facilities Coordinator, and he can kind of go over what this might entail.
Good evening. Chris Lumber, Sustainability Facilities Coordinator. So what we've got at the Country Club Road, it has functioning heat, it has functioning air conditioning. The building was built out in kind of a stepwise fashion, and the air conditioning systems are not truly split between each of the rented spaces. So there's air exchange kind of back and forth between different spaces. Part of Conner's program is to truly create, in Steve Conner's words, a box around the Turtle Island space. And doing that will, there will be one portion of that that used to be heated from other parts of the building that won't have heat in it. And what they're proposing is adding, I'll back up one step. The building is currently heated with rooftop-mounted package units that contain propane furnaces and electrically-powered air conditioning. And it's ducted down through the roof and ceiling-mounted louvers throughout the building to provide supply and return. And Conner's is proposing adding a third unit on top of the two that serve the portion of the building they're going to use. And it will be a new-generation hybrid unit that, it's a heat pump for heating down to about 20 degrees when the efficiency of these units really drops off. Their capacity goes down, and at that point, it would switch over to propane. So it basically has built-in backup propane. But down to 20 degrees, you get the benefits of not burning fossil fuel and increased efficiency and lower operating costs. Also, really, they, Conner's partnered with a really excellent mechanical engineer gentleman named Jeremiah Trombley, and his focus is efficiency and air quality. And the other thing about the building is, given the age of the building, it's got really deep cavities above the ceiling, and, you know, it's got dust, dust and whatever else up there from the last 40 years. That will all be sealed off, and Jeremiah is really going to have a keen eye towards addressing, providing top-quality air quality for these kids. I mean, like, what else would you want for childcare program? So it's, and the $100,000 price tag with inflation, construction costs now, you can't do anything for less than that. I'm really, really confident that Conner Construction and their design team are really being wise with both Turtle Island's money and the city's money in this recommendation. And that said, I editorialized on Turtle Island for just a second, if you'd hear me out. Both my children are alumni of Turtle Island, and they have just these lasting friendships from Turtle Island. It's a top-quality program. I think everybody in the room knows that. I have friends from 20 years ago that I met at Turtle Island that are just really dear people to me, and it's just, it's a really great community-building facility or program on top of the childcare provides. And as I've kind of processed this, I work closely with the team here. And as I process this, it just seems like such a perfect fit for the long-term plan for this property. You think about, you'll have apartments up there and starter housing for people, young families having children, and to have a program of this quality onsite for those people, it's just, it's really, it's really an amazing opportunity. And I'm really glad it's fallen in our lap.
Thanks, Chris. Another question about the utilities and the separation of the utilities. Is the building on one electric meter now, and is that going to be split up as part of it?
No, there's several electric meters, and Conner's, they're going to work to separate the electrical for Turtle Island. And as we build out other portions of the building, we'll keep trying to keep that methodology. There are separate gas meters as well for the existing propane furnaces on the roof. And so it seems like it's going to be pretty easy to separate utilities so that maybe for the first year or so, we'll be doing the monthly rent payment to capture utility costs, but hopefully it'll, from then on, it will be Turtle Island paying their own utilities. And again, you know, the hybrid rooftop unit will help reduce their operating costs, and they don't have any money to spare, do you?
Thanks. Anyone else have any, Council of Questions?
Can I add one thing about the existing system? One thing that was pointed out by Sean Goodell, the Fire Marshal, Assistant Fire Marshal, was that the current system has flex ducting, which is not to code, so that would all need to be replaced regardless. And so this would just be a better way to replace that.
Thanks.
Just to discuss the shape of the building, I think it's great. I just have questions about the termination of the lease. Like, so we're talking a 10-year term, two, five-year renewable terms after that, and that either party can choose to terminate the lease during that first 10-year term, 12 months notice?
So going into the way that it was drafted, so like it would be 10 years with a five-year option after.
But if, okay. But either party may terminate the lease prior to the conclusion of the initial lease term, no more than 18 months and no less than 12 months?
Yeah, so there's a notification.
But during year six, they could say, and give a 12-months' notice?
So I think the intention there was that it would be, you know, year 10 would be the initial term, would be the base term. And year six, what's important about that is that we wanted to be able to review the rental rate.
Yeah, I would just say, like, kind of echoing Chris frankly, I think this is a wonderful opportunity for our city. I'm really, I want to just commend you for sticking with us. I remember, like, questions about the RFP process and all of that, like, thanks for bearing with us. I'm really glad that it's come to this point. And, you know, I think it's an enormous opportunity for our city to send a signal that we really mean it when we say we care about Chalk Town.
Kelly.
So I received a couple of questions from the Street 2 people. Can we make a clarification that this development will not stop the housing initiatives at the Country Club Road? So I don't know who can explain this.
Oh, yeah.
People are like kind of concerned, like if, like Hub will be there, Turtle Island will be there, will it affect our housing plans there? So can you just clarify it for the public? It will not, as far as I understood, it will not affect.
It's all going in the building that already exists there.
Yeah. Kelly, you want to add anything?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, in fact, this probably helps leverage housing. But yeah, that's a great question, but thank you.
I can't speak to the bigger development, but we would, down the road, I'm sure be happy to collaborate with the neighborhood if it meant creating a play scape that can be shared, bring off hours or something like that. I would see that as more of an opportunity for the development.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. I just want to clarify this so everybody can hear. And if there are any questions related to this, everybody can always reach out to us. But I thought it's a good thing that we can say that it will not affect our housing plans so everybody can be relieved.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, so. And Adrian, too?
I just want to call up on Ben's question because as I read the language, it says not before February of 2034 can the contract be terminated. So it seems to contradict itself. It says you can terminate it anytime, as long as it's at least 12 months or not more than 18 months' notice. And then it gives us a date. Can you explain which is governing that?
Yeah, so I mean, it's the dates that are really kind of governing that is the first 10-year lease term. This is a little confusing because we modified it to adjust for a 10-year term rather than a five-year term. And so in the final version, we can clarify just the dates here that are cited. There will be a 12-month notification period. Just if they decided to move on, they'd need time to find a new space.
At any time during the 10-year term, 12 months' notice?
At the end of the...
That's not what it says. Well, it says that in one part, and then it gives a date.
The intent is for it at the sort of, if you're at the end of the 10-year period, so if you're at August of 31st of 2035, then it would really be August 31st of 2034.
So it's a non-terminating 10-year term.
For 10 years, and then there's a six-month window.
That is the intention, yes. And we can work to clarify that just to make sure. Yeah.
Adrian, then.
I guess we'd be absolutely clear, so we could not terminate it before 10 years or before, yeah, and they couldn't either. And so if they needed to leave, they would still be obliged to pay us the rent for the rest of the 10-year term.
Yes.
Okay.
Adrian.
I just had a question about just the partnership with the Hub and thinking about the gravel lot and how it all, I'm thinking like the big picture, right? So are you still coordinating with them? Like, how would the, does the gravel lot interfere with their development of their plans? Or I'm just thinking like phase one, phase two, phase three, like we might have 10 phases to this project. And so I just want to make sure we're thinking, you know, those five years ahead and making sure that we don't have any unintended consequences for what we signed today and how it might impact us in the future. And that gravel lot to me just, I don't know why, it just keeps like sticking out in my head as something that might cause a problem. I don't know what it would be, but I just want to make sure that, like, what is the thought behind that in terms of future development and building the hub and bringing in big construction and, like, what would that look like?
If I could speak to that, so we have been working together in developing leases, so the Hub has been kind of part of these conversations. And yeah, you're absolutely right, like that is the point of intrigue, just sort of the back portion that the Hub would be looking at in terms of the land that they might build their sports barn on. But there also might be another point of access around the front of the building. So we would work with them to make sure that they have the access that they needed.
My understanding is that they don't need to put any of their anticipated use space on that lot. That's my understanding. We can confirm.
Are you sure we're talking about it?
All right. I think that's it for questions and comments from the Council. Are there thoughts from members of the public? Yes.
Actually, the Turtle Island.
Hold the chair.
I have a couple things.
Hi, sorry, I'm Beckett Gentile. I'm on the Board of Directors for Turtle Island. I'm the treasurer, so I've been working really closely with Phoebe on the number side of things for a long time. So just a couple of things that I wanted to make note of as I was listening. With the questions about the lease renewal and the lease term and everything, I think are great questions. We definitely are, we want to be there, long-term. In fact, we're taking out a loan to be able to cover the renovations that need to be done, and it will be a 20-year term. So ideally, we would like to have right of first refusal for the first two, five-year, like subsequent leasing periods after that. So we, like, since we are taking out a loan for 20 years, we would just like first right of refusal on renting that space for that 20-year period, since we will essentially be paying off money that we put into that space for those 20 years, just to make it financially justifiable on our side of things. We know that rent is going to have to be recalculated along the way and some of those things. But we just want some, we would love to have some reassurance that we're not going to just be kicked out after 10 years and still be trying to pay off that loan, if that makes sense. So just to put that out there, that would be a request from us. And then the other thing that I just wanted to mention was, you know, the option of the year could come up and the additional possibility of additional classroom space in the building. It is critical to our sustainability, our financial sustainability, that we be able to somehow add two classrooms. If we can't add them somehow in this first year, we will figure something out and hopefully survive. But it is, just to be quite frank with everyone, it is pretty essential to our bottom line that we have those seven classrooms. So we would, we would be scrambling to figure out either yurts if the indoor space isn't truly available, which is a very tight timeline. So I guess just to put that out there, that we will need to find something so that we can continue to survive, whether it's at Country Club Road or if something else magically falls into our lap. But we, that would be lovely. But just to be perfectly upfront, that in terms of our long-term sustainability, we do need that extra tuition from those extra classrooms just to be able to make it in the future. So I just wanted to, I don't have a particular ask around that, just wanted to put that out there, that we will be kind of scrambling to find those extra spaces at some point.
Can I ask a question, like, those two extra classrooms, whether they're in the building in extra space or through the yurts, that would bring you up to 100% of where you are right now? And then have you done any kind of calculations of like how much space or how many students you could actually, is there a ceiling on the number of students that you could have?
You mean based on space or based on the teaching capacity?
Yeah, yeah, just organizational capacities, physical space, like, you know, would that, the 100% that you, assuming you had those two extra classrooms and were 100%, is that where you would want to stay, say, for the next five years? Or is there the potential for growth?
There's potential for growth, yeah.
We're licensed up to 90 students.
Right now.
Right now, right? Yeah, so that if we had the space and we were able to hire the staff, I think that we as an organization would be certainly comfortable expanding close to that 90 mark. If we went past that, we would have to look at some different administration support as well. But we do also recognize that childcare in Vermont is in a crisis, and we, if we're able to expand and help that, we would love to be able to do that.
Kelly.
Yeah, I don't know the details, probably we will talk about this. But I think the reason we are talking about this issue because your plans have changed. When you come to us with a proposal, it was like 30 or 40 kids maximum. So all the spaces, the building, everything was planned according to your proposal with the 40 kids. So I am sure that city staff is really flexible trying to help you, but it might take some time, right, to find, because we plan everything based on the 40 kids. I don't know what you call students, yeah, that number.
And we have been speaking with Kelly and the team.
Okay, yeah.
Throughout the process about this.
Yeah.
So.
I'm just curious, what is the square footage of those two extra classrooms that you need, the total square footage? Because I might have missed it.
At a minimum, two classrooms would probably, we would need at least 1,500 square feet.
Combined.
Combined, yeah, like 750 each would be kind of our minimum, hopefully. And, yeah.
If we had more space than that, it would allow us to have more children. And there also is amount of teacher, planning space that's required by licensing for the certain amount of teachers. So we also need to make sure that we're meeting that licensing requirement.
It needs to be two separate places or?
Can you, so you're asking if the two additional classrooms need to be in a different space? Is that what you're asking?
Does each classroom need to be in its own space, like, when you add it?
Well, like, so, meaning like separate rooms but in the same building? Is that what you're asking? I'm sorry, I'm confused by your question.
What I'm asking is either way, does it need to be separate buildings or separate rooms within the same building? Can it be either one?
It can be either one.
You've mentioned yurts.
Yeah, yeah, so we're looking at different ways to...
Yurts plural, it's, I assume it's two, one for each.
Yeah.
And you need some sort of connection to the existing building or whether it is self-sufficient?
That's something that we've been talking with planning about, because right now, the zoning for that area has a 24-foot minimum height requirement. And so we've been discussing with them ways that we could accommodate that, and it's not simple, to be frank, the yurt plan. Until, before we got the renovation estimate, we were thinking we would be able to have the financial capacity to do that. But at this point, it doesn't feel like that's a financially, it's not a real option for us, given the renovation costs that we're looking at. And we're excited to do those renovations to make this space really amazing. There is some space in the building that would be simple to move into with minimal renovation costs, but we have... But we have to discuss with the city team to make sure that that space is actually.
Is that the woodworking space?
No, that space would take some effort to get up to code.
So just to follow up, of the space that might come available in the existing building, does it need to be contiguous to your space?
Ideally, ideally it would be. And there is, we've looked at ways to connect them, but it doesn't have to be.
Okay.
Yeah. And just one other thing, you know, in this first year, if we needed, if we were able to access that space, that would be simple to move into, we could make it through the first year with a six-classroom model and then expand into seven the following year when we have time to apply for grants.
And so the additional space that they're talking about, looking at, is very easily connectable to the space that they're planning to build out already.
Carrie.
Yeah, so I'm all for this, it really wants to happen. And I also want to make sure we're getting into something that's going to work long-term for all of us. So I feel, I think I'm hearing you say that in order to be able to survive financially, you need seven classrooms. And this lease is for five. And so what if we don't rent you the other two classrooms? And now you're in a 10-year lease for five classrooms that you can't sustain?
We, so, Becca may have better things to say, but one of the things that is driving us toward those seven classrooms is that we don't want to reduce our programming.
Oh, yeah, no, I would be great, but I'm just, but.
Yeah, given our, if we, we could potentially make it financially sustainable, but we would have to let teachers and other staff go. And so we don't want to do that. We would like to continue to grow and expand, and Becca may have more.
Yeah, it would, it would be a blow to our programming because it would, we would have like no subs, nobody to cover. So when teachers were sick, we would have to close classrooms, which is very hard for working parents, et cetera. We would have to fire at least 10 staff, possibly more. So it would, it would be a, it would be a big blow. And it would make operations tricky. But, so other, if, if, for example, if we sign the lease for these five classrooms and the additional space at Country Club Road does not become available to us, we would continue looking for other spaces around the area. We've looked at, I don't know how many properties have you guys looked at? A lot, but there are, you know, we would look at anywhere else that we could rent in the area. We would try to fundraise and get grants to, look, if we could buy some land and build yurts. You know, we would, we're exhausting all of our options, and we would continue to do that. And we do have, we have the property that we own that we can use as collateral, that we can sell if we need to, so that we would be able to continue to pay our bills while we figure things out. It would just be very tough.
So would you, would you wait 10 years to find another place?
No.
So, but then you would be obligated to continue to pay us rent?
Yep, and so if we had to, we would.
Pay in two places?
If we had, if we had, if we could add additional, enough additional classrooms at another location, it would allow us to do that.
Not moving entirely, but I think.
Yes, 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 to having a second location, yes. That would get us the tuition we need to be able to cover the additional expenses.
Thank you, that's helpful. I just want to be clear that we're not getting ourselves into, we're not implicitly promising that those two spaces will be available to you. If we could do that, that would be great. And I would say, let's just put in the lease right now and just do it from the get-go. But if we can't, then we can't, so, but we can't promise that.
Yeah, we understand that. And I also just want to say that, again, we have been working with the planning department. And so if those classrooms weren't available, we would get by somehow this year. And then we would gather grant money or funding to put the year plan into place for the, for next year. Or we would maybe do something amazing this year and get it done.
Okay. Yeah, this is time for a public comment on this, and Steve, your hand is up first.
Steve Whitaker. I'm wholly supportive of Turtle Island having all the success in the world, you know, in Montpelier. I'm not sure this is the best fit for the location. This is a cluster screw of poor planning, as you've seen. And you're jumping right in the middle of it with a 10-year commitment. And that may or may not be the smartest. I'd like to see an out clause that they don't have to pay 10 years if another better location. I think we claim to be, you know, green and net zero and all that, but this is not a walkable distance, this is not a convenient place to drive to. The traffic capacity of that road and that intersection, somebody's going to get killed at that intersection. This, this, the city has refused to do the planning analysis of that road. And in effect, we're going to preclude housing. You know, Palin asked a very legitimate question about, we can tell the public that this isn't going to interfere with our housing. You can tell them that, it's not going to be true, okay? The road capacity that we use up with childcare of peak trip generation is going to come directly out of the capacity that is allowed for housing up there. That, that constraint does not go away. The planning department can wish all it wants to coerce, you know, a road through Saban's pasture. It just might not happen. And I would suggest that, since they are wanting to develop in Saban's pasture, that would be a better place to think about. I would take a two- or three-year lease here to keep, you know, keep your momentum and work on getting something that's at a much better suitable location for people driving less and dropping off kids. That's a dangerous road, you know, not a safe grade. It's got ravines, and it's an intersection and a railroad crossing that cannot support this traffic. This is really on y'all, because y'all have refused to do planning for Country Club Road and let Mike Miller, you know, run this thing into a pretzel, you know? But I can't figure out which is the best analogy. Charlie Chaplin, Keystone Cops, Abbott and Costello, or the Three Stooges. But this is not the way to plan Country Club Road, you know? Throw in Crosby, Go, throw in a childcare center with a 10-year, 20-year lease. This is not the way to do planning. So I've heard no one speak to the issues of this being a brownfield site. That this is a, there's poison there, that we do not know what the poisons are or what the potential drift or disturbing it with excavation or if we have to do blasting to put sewer lines through there? How is that going to affect the kids, you know? And the fact that we haven't talked about that stuff is just unconscionable. It's just, it's on y'all, you know?
Thanks, Steve.
And you let everybody talk more than five minutes this afternoon. So think about your ethics there and there.
Is there any other member of the public present in the room would like to be heard on this topic? And. Anybody online? I'm not seeing any hands up, but I want to be sure I don't miss anybody. All right, I'm not seeing anyone. Is there a motion to approve the proposed lease?
It's not ready, you haven't sorted out the 10-year?
Please stop talking. Sorry.
You didn't want to say it wasn't ready.
Yes.
So what I would be hoping for is the authorization to execute the lease. And so we would be working out a few of the terms, but they would be representative of what was here and drafted. And then once we have those terms, we would execute that.
I move that council provide the acting city manager, what are we calling?
So still the assistant until July 1st, but you know.
Great. Kelly, I move that we provide Kelly, the assistant city manager, city manager, the authority to continue negotiating the lease with Turtle Island absent any kind of substantive changes that we haven't discussed.
And to execute.
To execute, yeah, thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Carrie.
Yeah, the question about renewal, I think is a substantive question. So I think the way it's written in the lease draft that we have here, I'm very, very comfortable with. But if you wanted to make a different arrangement, I think that would need to come back to the council.
So you're comfortable with it as drafted?
Yes.
Anyone else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. We'll move on to the Montpelier Historic Preservation Commission ordinance change. This is scheduled for the first public hearing, so I'll just open the public hearing now, so I don't forget to do that.
Hi, everybody.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. So Meredith Crandall, zoning administrator. I talked to you all a few months ago now about this the first time. And then realized that John had actually put the ordinance into the ordinance. So then we need to go through the full public hearing process and make sure a red line was before you. So this is really simple. The Montpelier Historic Preservation Commission was created by the city council. And when it was created, the number of members was just listed as anywhere between three and nine. And over my seven years of being here and staffing the committee, that is.
Excuse me, Meredith. If you folks are going to talk, please move the conversation out of the room. Thank you.
It has made having a quorum really difficult. And so the commission would very much like to have the ordinance changed so that they will have five regular members and two alternates. And so this is the first hearing, there's a red line in your packet, it's a really simple change. When, and if the council actually approves it, we actually have a recommendation. One of our current regular members will become an alternate, and then there'd be an alternate seat left vacant right now, because we do have one opening at the moment.
Thanks.
Anybody have any questions for me?
Seems very straightforward. Folks, any questions? Any comments from any members of the public? Again, I do not see any hands raised. So I will close the public hearing, and we need a motion to schedule this for a second public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
And is there a timeline? Can it be as early as July 9?
I think, I don't think we have to do another notice. So I think as long as you say it here, that it's going to be July 9, it can be July 9.
Okay. July 9?
Sounds perfect.
All right. Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next up, item eight, Berry Street Recreation Path update.
See this?
No, we should, we should do something with the lights, wherever they are. Thanks, Ben.
So Corey Line with Public Works, Kurt Martica, our director, is here also. And we're going to discuss the Berry Street Recreation Path project. I want to, in hopes of not mudding the waters here, specifically here in the beginning, and staff recommendations relate to the actual construction of the path. But we are going to get into a couple of other projects at the end that are connected, and we'll talk about the impacts and how they all work together. To get our bearings, wow, it's really blurry. Highlighted yellow line, that represents the existing Montpelier Recreation Path that actually extends out past this view to the east and the west boundaries, and then extends out beyond that and acts, serves the region as part of the Crossmont Trail. And so the area we're talking about this evening is Berry Street from Main Street to just outside the window here, across from the senior center. In the fall of 2019, the Berry Street Main Street scoping study was completed and approved by city council. This included short-term and long-term recommendations to complete the path on Berry Street. But it went beyond that. It actually talked about intersection improvements along Main Street, as well as corridor improvements as it relates to pedestrian and bicycle activity and connectivity. The short-term recommendation, preferred alternative that came out of that study was the protected bike way with the bollards and the striping, which was installed last summer. The long-term preferred alternative was the more traditional separated bike path, like you see on the right side there. Progress in where we are right now, like I said, fall of 2019, the scoping study was completed and approved. Spring of '21, the state, or I'm sorry, the city applied for and received the, what's called a large project grant from the bicycle and pedestrian program from the state. And not shown yet, in 2022, with the council's support, we hired the firm of StanTech to take us through the conceptual preliminary final design, obtain all permits and clearances, and take us through the federal process, which is where we are now. We, all designs have been reviewed by the state, all permits have been obtained, all clearances, environmental, historical, everything has been obtained from the state at this time. So that brings us to the present line and why we're here. Which is, so the Bike and Ped State Program, they have a few different categories that you apply for. One is scoping studies, which actually, this scoping study was completed through this program. The other one is a small project area. And then there's a large project with, which this project received. And then there is a additional funding, which before construction, applicants can come back, apply for additional funding for projects that have already been accepted and granted, which this one has been. So that is our plan, to apply for additional funding for this project. Really, you know, I'm assuming this, I don't have official word, but considering the escalation in pricing over the past couple of years, they're probably seeing more additional funding applications if they are new projects. And they tell you upfront, so these are five-year projects from the time you receive the grant from completion. So I would just imagine they're seeing more additional funding applications like this than they are new projects. So this isn't a, it's a very standard thing. And so we're looking at, if funded, we're looking at construction. Either later this fall or early spring, we would give the contractor that option to provide some favorable funding. And the funding, the original grant that we received, an amount of $305,000. So this is broken down, these grants are 80/20, which means the city is responsible for 20% of the total amount. So we have that broken down for you here. Expenditures to date, finally, you know, through the design process and permitting, 78K has been expended. And that leaves 227 remaining from the original grant. Final construction estimate is 413, which leaves the ask for the. Final construction estimate is $413, which leaves the ask for this additional funding would be $185,000.
And you expect that you'll be able to start, to get the funding and start construction later this year?
Yeah, we would have everything teed up, ready to go. Bid package, obviously, we couldn't go out to bid until it was awarded. We anticipate we will get awarded this funding. NITRANS wants to use this money for projects, obviously, that are going to get constructed. So this is kind of a layup for them, it's a competitive grant program, but the $185 represents 2% to 3% of the total funding they handed out last year, and this one's ready to go. So it's kind of, it's a rubber stamp, but it's not a rubber stamp grant program.
All right, thanks. Any questions from--
I'm sorry, sorry, I hit the wrong button, it's four, and I got a couple more.
Oh, right, sorry about that.
We just want to talk a little bit about the design. So this is, the recreation path would be located on the south side of Berry Street. Currently, there are 13 metered spaces and one un-metered space on that side of the street. This path would take the place of those. It would not increase the footprint. If you picture where the back of the sidewalk is now, on one side, and the back of the sidewalk on the other side, that would remain the same. So the back of the sidewalk on the south side now acts as the back of the path on the south side. There's a varied green strip that's going to vary between four and two feet. And then there's a 10-foot, two 10-foot travel lanes and eight-foot parking lane. And then the sidewalk on the north side remains as-is. And I just wanted to mention, through our public outreach, there was some-- Something was brought, there's a couple of businesses that rely on large delivery vehicles and trucks. So the one thing I wanted to mention, the driveways here along this will meet the city's standard driveway design, which means there'll be radiuses, sweeps to accommodate turning movements in and out of those driveways, instead of just a straight path, which is, you know, a straight shot, which is basically what you have here today. I want to make sure I mention that. Okay, so that was the path project, let's get into just these other two here. So we have the signalization of the Berry Street intersection, that was also a recommendation from the same scoping study. In, I'm going to say 2021, it could be a year off though, the voters approved a bond to pay for that signalization. It was, I think it was $500,000. That was the estimated cost through the conceptual design in the scoping study. And we have a third project, which is the reconstruction of the railroad crossing that is adjacent to that intersection. And that's going to consist of the approach pads, the rail, flashing beacons, safety items like that, and also the channelization, fencing off of the rail right-of-way through this corridor to restrict unauthorized crossings, cross the tracks and channelize people to the authorized crossings, like Main Street, like the crossing further down on Stone Cutters. So if you can picture how this is going to work, crossings from Stone Cutter to Berry Street along those corridors is no longer going to be allowed. So that Berry Street corridor now accommodates all of those folks that would normally be crossing there. And then Signal also obviously accommodates all the crossing across Main Street. So state is doing something to improve their safety, the railroad tracks. City is putting in infrastructure to accommodate those changes and the result of those changes. Staff recommendation, approve the letter of support that was included in the packet, which will be included in the application. When receiving the funding, project will go out to bid and construction of the path, and then continue to work through the preliminary design of the Signal and Railroad Crossing project, which the-- So maybe I didn't-- The intent is to combine the signalization and the railroad crossing into the same project under the state's umbrella, under the state's crossing project. So those will be bid together and constructed together because they interact with each other. There'll be detection devices along the tracks, which will interact with the beacons, which will interact with the traffic signal. So it makes sense to construct those all together. And right now, they are looking at a construction of late in the season next year, or potentially the following spring. Yeah, so part of the-- The signalization cost, it was also included what's called adaptive signal technology, which basically reacts to what's happening out there in real time throughout the Main Street corridor to help reduce congestion. Instead of sort of a pre-timed thing or a coordination thing, it actually will let phases go, let approaches go and stop based on what's actually happening out there at the time. You know, there's been a lot of advances in that technology since even that estimate was done. So, you know, we anticipate that, that $500K that was approved, you know, we still feel good about that number even with inflation, because there's been a lot of advancements in this. And also, combining the project with the state's crossing project, they're taking on a lot of design and potentially construction things that we would, we would be taking on by ourselves. So whenever we team up with the state with projects like this, tend to get a good deal. So, so we still feel good about the $500K that was approved for, for that signalization.
This is such a frustration for me, because we're at the mercy of the state doing the railroad crossing to fix the intersection, which is what the people in Montpelier really care about, and the intersection is still bad, so I'm glad, I'm glad we're making progress.
Right, and just a couple of notes on, on that. So that has to really be done together, because when a train comes, basically, that light has to turn right, at the right time, to make sure, you know, there's no green light, so that, that's, you know, why we're really required to coordinate with the train, with the rail. And also on the adaptive technology, just to kind of simplify the concept there, is, is the traffic signals at Main Street Memorial and, and East State and Main Street are relatively close to Berry Street. And so really, the idea is just to make sure that those are all coordinated together, so that, so that you, you just have a better traffic flow rather than, you know, untimed, uncoordinated traffic that could cause congestion.
It's going to be great. Questions? Jim?
So you talked of three projects, do they all have to be done? Or can they be separated? I mean, you said that these last two can't be, but, I mean, if I heard you right, you said 14 parking spaces?
13 metered and one un-metered.
Right, the 14 parking spaces, that's what I'm looking at. So can the other two go and that one not?
The project and the path other?
The biking part, yeah.
Yep. Technically, yep.
Okay. Just wanted to ask that question, that the intersection can proceed without the biking section.
Thank you.
Can you talk, though, about the parking demand along Berry Street? Did you guys look into that?
Yeah, we did. Over the past month and a half, we did some check-ins. Just picked a random day of that week, of a week, and checked on it in the morning, around 8 o'clock when the meters come online. Went in, checked in the noon hour, and then in the evening, 5 o'clock, you know, dinner hour after work, just to kind of see what the utilization was, what the usage was. You know, if there was any, you know, trends that were happening out there. So basically, in the AM, 8 o'clock, it's very under, you know, there's a few cars parked there at 8 o'clock. Not much going on, and obviously, that increases throughout the day. The noon hour comes, and you see some increase for anywhere from, you know, 10 vehicles to up into the 16, into the teens. And this is both sides, this is both the north and the south side combined through this entire corridor. And then in the evening hour, you see the same thing, 12, 13, 16. There was one evening when the total number of vehicles parked on both sides couldn't be accommodated on the north side alone. So there's 18 spaces on the north side. So there were more than 18 vehicles parked on both sides and couldn't be accommodated on one side. Other than that, we found that all the parking could be accommodated on the north side of the street. The other thing we noticed too, that it does seem like there is some shorter duration, quicker turnover in some of those spaces. And talking with police, we have some shorter meters, some 30-minute meters in stop. So it may be an appropriate place to put those to help accommodate that, that quick, that quicker turnover.
Jim?
I want to piggyback on what he said, did you do Sunday?
We didn't do the weekends.
So you didn't do when the church is there?
No, no weekends.
Any other questions from the council? Carrie?
Yeah, I'm wondering if we looked at the effect of the temporary bike lane that was there, where we blocked off the parking spaces and we had it open for a while. And was there, did you look at how many people were using that? Did you get any sense of what the impact of the loss of those parking spaces was? Did it increase traffic on the path? Do you have any of that?
No, we didn't take any counts. It wasn't, the, the short-term bikeway wasn't intended to be a pilot or temporary. It's recommended to be the short-term in place until the long-term. So didn't approach it as, you know, it's a pilot, let's see what happens. Because it's, it's the short-term recommendation, it's what should be in there according to that plan. So no, no data, we didn't collect any data, we received comments, they seemed to be mixed, good and bad.
Jim?
This was talked about even back in my time, Dark Ages. And I used to sit along there to watch. Saw lots of cars, saw lots of pedestrians, saw very few bikes. I mean, we're talking about taking a lot of parking spaces for a minority. I'm just going to give an example of myself. I do a two-mile walk every day, I have to cross Norfield Street twice. There's a crosswalk there, nobody stops. If I just keep walking, I'm dead, because the cars coming through there are coming from a 50 mile an hour zone. So I just, I understand that I just can't walk steady, you know? If there's nobody coming, fine, I can scoot across. But I walk in the morning when national ice is coming up, and some of them, the early ones, and people are heading to work. So I can't continue my walk steady. I just understand that's the way it is. I just have to sit there and wait till it's clear, because I'm not taking the chance of being dead right. So, and what I'm saying is, you know, a biker can get off, walk it for a bit, yes, you can't continue your bike ride, but we're talking about 14 parking spaces on a downtown that has had six major disruptions to the businesses down there, starting with COVID and the flood, and the no state workers, and, you know, the unhoused issues, the crime, the fact that there's online competition, and, and also the construction. I sit on that committee and listen to them, and we're going to take, we're just going to give them another hit. We all know, or most of us probably know by now, we have a third elephant in the room, a second elephant in the room downtown to go along with the post office, the Capitol Plaza. It's all pretty precarious down there, and this is just going to be another blow. There's the church, they didn't even do a study on the church. A lot of them in the church now are older people, that's who mainly goes to church. People that bring laundry, loads of laundry down there. So we're just going to put another hit on a downtown. You know, let's just keep hitting them so we don't have a downtown, that's what's going to happen.
Okay, see, go ahead, Ben.
Well, no, I, I really appreciate the concern for the downtown, Jim. I actually think about it differently, though, that I feel like this is an asset to the downtown that will bring more people in. You know, I think, I just view, you know, outdoor recreation like this as an economic driver. And I actually just, even thinking about like the Country Club Road property, that this is a piece of infrastructure that will help with connectivity. And, you know, I just think about things like the Lemoyle Valley Rail Trail, or Mississauga Valley Rail Trail, the Cross from Mont Trail. Like, when I, I do ride this on my bike, I'm not a huge biker, but when I ride my, this park stinks. Like, it's, it's just, it really stinks. And if you could ride kind of like anxiety-free all the way from what the sewage treatment point end, all the way down to Agway, without like the anxiety of that intersection in the same way, I, I think more people would ride it. And I, again, I think it, it creates a critical piece of infrastructure that's going to bring more people into the downtown, and I think would have a net benefit as opposed to-- I could hear you about the concern about the loss of parking, but I actually think it would have a net benefit in the long run for bringing people into the downtown.
Well, my only question--
Jim? Adrian?
I, I agree with Ben. I think, you know, I'm a huge, you know, supporter of outdoor recreation, and that's, you know, having a background in public health, I feel like we should be riding our bikes a little bit more and getting outside of our cars if we can. And I do ride my bike down there, and I cross, I don't even know what I do, but I cross like a sidewalk, and I go over the railroad track, and I walk my bike, it's completely ridiculous. Just to get back to the path, which is behind Sar Dujies. So it would, I think we have to think of this like as a holistic approach, Shore City. And I know on one of our topics coming up, I don't know Kelly when this is on the agenda, but looking at the parking in Montpelier. So I think if we look at the parking opportunities in Montpelier, and think about the lots and the leases that we have, and opportunities to increase parking, you know, on the periphery. And, you know, I would love to encourage more people to bike, it's better for the environment. It's, you know, it's better to get out of your cars and go for a bike ride. I think the church, I heard a lot on Front Porch Forum about the church on Sundays and having people park. So if we can think about creative ways for parking around that area, even businesses that might, you know, open up their parking lots, or, you know, just ways to like allow folks that, you know, you know, might have a disability or might not be able to walk too far to go to church or do their laundry, while still incorporating a bike path in our downtown, I think we can have the best of both worlds. I think we just have to be creative of how we approach that and have that conversation.
Thanks, Adrian. I see a couple--
Check, can I?
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, I just didn't want to lose Adrian's thought there. And I wasn't present for the parking fund conversation, I did go back and view it, though. I thought there was some good outside-the-box thinking, as well as some conventional thinking. I think there was some dynamic timing, dynamic payment system, I think that's all, that's all good. But the one thing that wasn't discussed, which is actually covered in this plan, and then another downtown transportation plan that we have, is the reallocation of space. And the communities that have seen success, especially economic success with reallocating unused parking spaces to attract people, not just for transportation needs like this, but increased pedestrian ways, outdoor seating, things like that. So I would just recommend maybe brushing up on this study, as well as the other downtown transportation study, when you have that parking conversation.
So, yeah?
I just have two further questions. As you come west on the new installation bike path and get to the rec center, you hang a right, and you have to cross the tracks. Is there a signal there that's tied into the other signal? And the other question is, how does this permanent installation differ from, if at all, the temporary installation?
So now, the, the crossing behind the rec path doesn't have flashes or anything?
So no, the crossing behind the rec path doesn't have flashes or anything like that.
But it's got to be fenced?
Yeah, fenced. That crossing doesn't change. In fact, well, I think we're going to try to work out something with the contractor that does the rail crossing to kind of improve that crossing. There's some deterioration there, so sort of some maintenance there when that, when that project is going on. As far as the difference between the short-term and the long-term, you know, I don't have it on the screen, but it's, the long-term is obviously more of a standard curb, green space path with the short-term being, you know, bollards and paint.
I see there are some hands raised online. I'll start with them. Peter Kelman?
Thanks, Jack. I like the fact that some people are raising the idea of looking at this whole issue not in an isolated way, that parking, the bike path, the all-purpose path, the signalization, these are all connected. And while you're, if you're going to think about it in this more holistic way, let me urge you to think about two things. I live on Mountain View Street and I can tell you that in the, in the world of GPSs, where people follow what the GPS tells them to do mindlessly, we have a steady stream of traffic from exit eight where they take a right onto National Life Drive through Mountain View, sometimes come, very often come down to my dead end because they missed the turn because they, because their GPS tells them that's the shortest route. Well, maybe one second difference or 20 second different or maybe not even, maybe momentarily different. If we start having development up in Northfield, like the Beauf project, which might come in where, where the motel is, or if the Habitat project is developed, we already have incredible stoppage at that light. So I'm hoping that this adaptive signalization is going to take into account the fact that we may have quite a bit of traffic coming down from Northfield Street to Main Street, well, to Main Street. Just fold that into your, your thinking about this. Thanks.
Thanks, Peter. Kate?
Hi, my name is Kate Tankday. I actually live in Berry, but I work on Berry Street at Guys Farming Yard. I'm the manager. I'm one of the people who's like really concerned about this because, you know, we're losing a lot of parking spaces like right in that front of the store, the people across the street at the church, like Jim mentioned, the laundromat. And I know the folks next door as well at Buddy's will also be losing a lot of spaces for business. And, you know, we're really lucky, we're one of the only like downtown businesses that has their own parking lot. I can tell you it's very difficult to patrol on a good day. And, you know, I was also concerned and am concerned about the fact that like most of our stuff comes on tractor trailers. I was pretty quickly dismissed by Corey in a conversation that we had last year about the fact that like he was pretty adamant that they'd still be able to back in comfortably. I don't think he actually witnessed them trying to do that, my guess. Because like when the other side of Berry Street's full, they can't, I mean, it's impossible. So then we have to unload in the middle of the street. People are not patient. I've had many instances where I've almost been hit while I've been on my forklift, you know? So those are things that I'm really, I'm concerned about, I'm frustrated with. I'm frustrated with the lack of revenue, you know? Taxes are going up. It's, it's tough. And this is like, it's kind of a blow, I think, a blow to downtown. Very frustrating.
Thanks, Kate. Dave?
Hi, everybody. I'm Dave Bellini, living at the hot corner of Liberty and Loomis. Good to see you guys. I'm a little uncomfortable with the loss of parking spaces. I'm too ignorant to speak about traffic signals. I don't know anything about them. 10 months ago, I suffered a serious spinal cord injury. I'm lucky to be alive and I found out what it's like to have mobility issues. Ooh, I think the parking spaces will affect more people than you think. And not to make too big of a deal out of it, but, you know, I think the cars outnumber the bikes like 200 to one. I saw what they did to the Barry Montpelier Road, they narrowed it. It's okay. But, you know, I drive that road almost every day. I see a lot of cars. I never see any bikes, I mean, very rarely. So it's a real minority of people and biking is good, it's healthy, I support it. When I was younger, hey, I had bikes. The only bike I got now is a stationary bike. And, you know, it's already parked. So I'd give that a little consideration if you would and thanks for listening to me.
Thanks, Dave. Steve?
Yeah, Steve Whitaker, I'd like y'all to think about what's possible as to whether using stone cutters. I'm concerned about where, I've talked to people who do business there, you just heard from one, I talked to somebody else who does business there and they, it's, it's very risky to park on the other side of the street and cross Berry Street. Berry Street is a high-traffic vehicle and to get to his business can be very, very chancy. There aren't crosswalks in that mid-block. I'm concerned about the idea of fencing, that you wouldn't be able to walk from the dry cleaner building over the bank to the, you know, Orto Sarducci's. If you fence that whole thing, you're going to create impediments. I would be really concerned if the fencing's going to be on the Shaw's side too, because I know somebody who's, you know, been hit by traffic backing out of the blind spots in Shaw's. Is the fencing proposed to be on closing the railroad right of way across from Shaw's to the river? Yeah, see, that's, that's dramatic, bad design because people cross those tracks. I've been working to get gravel in there to bring them up the way BGS did for themselves so they can cross between the BGS shop and the heat plant. They just build it in with gravel so that it's at least safe to cross. But to put a fence is totally contrary to our walkability of town because walking in through an active parking lot with people backing out blind from those right-hand side of Shaw's parking lots, when you go into Shaw's, you park, there's a row of 10 cars that parks diagonally, they're backing into where you're asking people to walk in. And that's just, so I think we should look more thoroughly at whether there's a path for the bike to cross over the stone cutters, do something creative with that between the yoga studio, I think it is, and the dry cleaner building and get around the bank onto stone cutters. I mean, Stone Cutters has a lot less traffic and is much slower pace because of the parking than Berry Street is. So that might, if we got to share, that's a better way, place to do it.
Thanks, Steve.
That's okay, I can stand. Hi, my name's Paul Capcara. I actually own the house at 45 Berry Street, which is literally right across the street from here and affected by this proposal. We've all heard of not in my backyard, this is literally in my front yard, but I'm all for it. I think the temporary or the non-pilot original piece that they put up had a really wonderful effect and then it slowed people down on Berry Street. We've all mentioned how busy Berry Street is and people literally, you know, fly up and down that stretch, which is very dangerous because there are a lot of pedestrians going to church and trying to go to Guys Farming Yard and, and our house is right there. And so we see oftentimes people speeding coming right off the intersection on Main Street. And when they put in the temporary bike lane, it actually narrowed the street a little bit, which had the really lovely effect of slowing people down. So I'm very much in favor of this and I think the design looks great. It will be nice for pedestrians to have also a little more space going through there. So one vote in favor from somebody right on the roof.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm Kate Sweeney. I'm actually Paul's wife and I'm in favor of the bike path. I am concerned about the fencing on the railroad. I, I don't know if that actually comes into this council, it sounds like it's a state thing, but I am concerned about that because of the flow of people back and forth. I'm going to say also that I walk by guys and I walk by buddies and I shop at both and I rarely see those parking lots full. And I would love to see them full for, for business, but I, I don't see that. And so I think that the parking spaces are not going to be an issue. And I would love it if they would be able to share with the church to be able to allow people to go to church. Thanks.
Thanks. Anybody else of the public who wants to be heard? This is one of those things. One of the things I've noticed since I've been on the council is that some things take so long that, that people forget that we've studied it and made decisions. And, and when we were developing this scoping study, it was like five years ago and we had a number of public hearings, at least one of which was right in this room and there were hundreds of people. And, and this was, this plan of having the, that's before us tonight, is the plan that, that was approved and had a lot of support back when, when everyone was coming out to, to talk about it. And the, the outcome is that when, when the grant money is available to do it and we've made the decision, made, we've made the decision years ago to, to go forward with this, now all we have to do is ask for the money to, to put the finishing construction on. I think this is pretty straightforward, that we should just do this. But, and I know that, Jim, you say, well, you don't see very many people riding their bikes on Berry Street and I'm, I'm absolutely sure that that's true. And this plan is intended to remedy that because people don't want to ride on Berry Street because they're afraid of getting doored on the one side or squeezed by a passing car on the other side. And so this is an opportunity to get people to ride, not just for recreation, but for transportation. And so I think it's, it's time to do this. Jim?
I'd like to answer three people, including you. I'll start with Adrian. You're looking at it from a young person's perspective. 40% of this people are 50 and over. When you get 50 and over, you don't do a lot of bike riding, a lot of people. So you're going to have a lot of your population that, that doesn't pertain to, I can't ride a bike anymore since the spinal disease, just for an example. So I understand biking's good for you, a lot of things are good for you. I'd like to have that little walkway above where I cross on Northfield Street, have a little walkway that goes over so I can continue, but you know, I'm not going to ask for that and I'm not going to whine about it, I just wait and do it. Ben, if there's no downtown, I don't know who you think's going to come. You keep saying, well, I think this will bring people in if there's no hotel and there's no shops. You think a bike path is going to bring people in? I don't believe so. And Jack, you're talking five years ago before COVID, before, you know, the flood, before all the economic stuff has happened. So that's really meaningless to now. I mean, to live in the past and say, well, five years ago, this was all, everybody came down and said it, five years ago is a big difference in the world today, just like five years out from now, none of us can predict what we're going to have. You just can't predict anymore. So a lot has happened in the last five years. So to go on something five years ago, it just isn't applicable anymore. So I'm not going to, anyway, I'm not going to vote for this. So I mean, if the rest of you want to vote it in, that's fine.
Thanks. Yes?
I think it's very, very important for us to look not into the past, but into the future. So we're building childcare, we're trying to attract young families, you know, there is a generational shift that will happen. It is inevitable. You know, we all get old and, you know, it's just the way the world is, it's guaranteed. And so we need to look to the future of the next generation of Montpelierites that are going to bring in their young families, that are going to have, you know, young kids that want to ride their bikes, they need to be safe. I don't ride on that part of, I don't think I've ever ridden on Berry Street because I'm scared, but I make accommodations to places that I feel safe. And so I think if we envision Montpelier in 10 years and we do these things now, I think people will come because it's a great place to ride, you can walk, it's safe. Hopefully our downtown will be thriving in 10 years and, you know, we can really continue to rebuild over the past five years of which we suffered. So I, I think it's a good idea for, for the future of Montpelier.
And the motion you encourage is a motion to have us send in this letter.
I was just going to make, just about the fencing off of the railroad. It is railroad right of way, they can take whatever steps they feel necessary to improve the safety. I know they've always struggled with this corridor, whether it's people crossing wherever or people parked right on the tracks back when, you know, the Berbridge Mark was there. If the council or the public, if there are any concerns with that, we're happy to relay those to the state in our conversations with them.
Yeah, I would actually just add to that too. I have real concerns about the fencing too, particularly around flooding potential, you know, that obviously that area didn't flood before, but I think anytime we're talking about putting fencing now in our downtown, there are potential for debris to get caught in the fence and potentially cause a, you know, I just think it's something that we should really consider significantly and the degree to which there's an ability to have a conversation with the state about fencing and what that looks like, I think it's something that warrants further conversation and investigation. And finally, I would say, Jim, like totally respect your opinion. I would say that like, you know, you look at things like Lemoine Valley Rail Trail that is anticipated to have 60,000 visitors on it. You know, I grew up in a small town up in the Kingdom, East Burke, $11 million of economic activity through Kingdom Trails. Like I do think the bike thing is huge and my mom is 81 years old last week and rides bike, you know, and I think it's an important, an important thing for our city.
So is there a motion to approve this?
I'll move that we, I'll move that we approve it.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion is carried. I'll sign the letter and it is time for our 8:30 break and we're only six minutes off. So back in 10 minutes. So back in 10 minutes. We are up to item nine on the agenda, establishing an economic development subcommittee.
Thank you, Jack. So I've been working on this idea almost like two months. And I've talked about different community members, stakeholders and city councilors. And the idea started to create a working group to talk about economic development and growth and what we can do as a city council to support this in our town. Then after talking different people, I think the good pathway will be also working with regional economic institutions. That's why I talked to Kelly and Bill and instead of proposed working group, I've decided to call it subcommittee, city council subcommittee. So it will give the initiative more official spirit that we can, it will let us to reach out more people and more institution, more groups. And Adrian and Sal are interested in working with me. So I just want to ask city council to consider this as six month city council subcommittee that will work with different stakeholders, community members, businesses, Montpelier Alive, and also regional economic development institutions and create some policy suggestion because I know that as a city, we cannot do everything and we have sometimes limited authority, but I think we have the power to start a momentum. So maybe after six months, these stakeholders and groups, they can continue discussing, working together, collaborating. And I think as a city council, it will be great for us to start that momentum. So now it is up to you, yeah, what to do.
Any comments or thoughts from other members of the council?
Yeah, well, I think, thank you for bringing this forward. You know, I'm totally prepared to support it if this is, if folks, you know, council members want to serve on this and move this. You know, economic development is one of the priorities that we've identified. I think that's great. The two concerns that I have are, one, that we're currently advertising for community and economic development specialists, right? That was Josh Jerome's. And so it's not necessarily a problem, but I think it would be extremely important that if a subcommittee was formed, that it would be really coordinated or that there was frankly like a leadership role with that person, right? Like that we would be tasking that individual as their, you know, as an employee of the city to help us focus on economic development. And so I think just stewarding relationships with like the Regional Economic Development Corporation, VITA, like all the entities, there needs to be really thoughtful coordination there. And I just would want to make sure that the staff is in that position is empowered to do those relationships. And then I just feel like compelled to say, you know, we've added a number of subcommittees or working groups in the past few meetings, all within the context of having a conversation of reducing committees. And, you know, I know, you know, and the staff support will only be provided as capacity allows, the subcommittee will work without a dedicated budget. Like, yeah, I think that's just the other concern I have. It's just wanting to make sure that we're not telling staff one week, we're trying to reduce the committees because we know you're overtaxed and then this week we're going to form another committee. But again, I feel like if there's enthusiasm and interest in it, and this is clearly a topic that's like a critical need for our city, if folks want to take it on, I appreciate that and I'm happy to support it if that's what you want to do.
Yeah, thank you for expressing your concerns. Again, the idea started not to form a committee because of all this reason you just listed, but after talking so many different people, the best way to get more interest from regional economic institution, the name is also important. So I served on that like committee reviews, subcommittee with you. And it was like one of my ideas, too. We don't have that much capacity. We have to decrease the committee numbers. And that's why I've started resurging on this idea, having like working group. But in the end, because of the formality we have to call it, that's why I specifically mentioned that we are not looking for any support from city staff. So, but also it is only six month committee. Maybe we will finish our study earlier than six months. So, but yeah, I've heard this concern from district residents, too. So yeah, my intent is not to create more committees. My intent as a city council to connect with our stakeholders and community members and businesses and show that we will be there for them to support their ideas in the policymaking angle. So yeah, thanks.
Yeah, thanks. Like Ben, I think if there are city councilors who are eager to do this and want to have these conversations and engage with the community and talk about this stuff, that's fantastic. And I think it should happen. I also have concern about adding more committees, of course, as we keep talking about. And I thought I heard that this would be just city councilors, but did I not, was that wrong? Because when I read it, it includes a whole bunch of other people.
So the idea started like that. It will be only city councilors, but after talking different people, then they said, oh, it would be great if you have a representative. It would be great if you reach out to this person. And I just want to mention that idea here, too. Sometimes committees have volunteers, but not committee members. Maybe we can do something like that. But again, like my intention is not increase the committee numbers. And if any of you suggest some other structure, I'm also okay to go with it. But the idea is city council, go there, be proactive, talking to people, bring different stakeholders together and just to start a momentum so they can continue collaborating in the future. That's why it is only six months.
Okay, great. And that was just my first, my first thought. And then I, so, well, I have two more thoughts. I think that the charge is gigantic and not a six month project. It's a great charge. It'd be great if we got, had all that done, but this is part of why we're going to be hiring a full-time person to do this work. And Montpelier Alive is working on this and there's a lot that's already happening. So I think it's a, I think it's ambitious for six months, but I think that there could be fantastic conversations and connections made in six months to kind of get a sense of, okay, where are we going to need to go? And then since we've identified economic development as one of our major priorities, it's going to be our strategic plan and in our city plan, and there's a lot of detail in the city plan already, we just want to make sure that it's, that it fits in with all that, you know, that it's strategic so that we're not, before we've approved, we haven't approved a city plan yet, we haven't finished our strategic plan yet. And so I think it's fine to make this committee, but just to be aware that they're going to need to be working with whatever we come up with in our plan and so that it all aligns.
Yeah. Maybe this will, this work will be like a press study for the plan and the priorities, something like that. And I think you just listed our agenda item for our first meeting, like go over the scope, make it like a little bit more compact, maybe if it is the right word. And then we can, and the idea is coming back in three months and just like inform the city council and the public what we've done and what are the ideas, what we just like And it is always room to, you know, restructure or redefine and just like decide what to do next. So thank you.
I see some hands up in the public. Peter Kelman.
Oh, thanks, Jack. I'd just like to make three quick points.
You may be muted, Peter.
He's very quiet. Nope, now he's muted.
Now you're definitely muted.
Am I muted now?
There you go. We hear you now.
Okay. I'd just like to make three quick points which relate to what's been said so far. The first point is that we made a mistake when we hired Josh. Not a mistake to hire Josh, but we hired somebody to do housing and economic development. He was an economic development guy, was thrust into doing housing. I had urged Mike, given the words of housing, I had urged him to hire somebody to be an econ, to be a housing specialist. I think it's a mistake to try to have this person be both. So here, I think you do need to think about whether, which, which person you're going to add. Nobody can do both, and especially not, not today. The second thing, so I think in some ways, Pellon's idea is a good one to think, well, all right, let's not depend on a, a community development, economic development person. The second thing is that in 2016, leading up to 2016, this was all outsourced to a consultant who came up with an economic development plan for Montpelier. And if any of you haven't read that plan, I suggest you do. It was horrible. It was a cookie cutter plan that this consultant came and superimposed. But it has been cited again and again and again in order to justify what people want, say, oh, well, the economic development plan said this. So if you, ultimately, we do need an economic development plan, or else we need to have the city plan actually have some guts to it. This, again, I think it's good for the city council to do it because you can align it with your strategic plans, your annual strategic plans. And you can also align it with the city plan, which that economic development plan was not, not at all aligned. And the third point I want to make, which I'll make later when we talk about committee on committees, which is why not recognize that task forces, task forces are an ideal kind of quote committee, but let's call it a task force, where you can bring in people who are stakeholders, who are city councilors, who are state and regional people. And it is not a function of the city council. It would not be a city council appointed. If the homelessness task force and the housing task force had truly not been city council, they weren't city council appointed, they were stakeholders. But you guys started to treat them as if they were a committee where, that needed staff support. They do not need staff support. They, they, if it's really a stakeholder kind of thing. So I would suggest, Pellon, that you think about this not as a city council subcommittee, but as a task force. And task forces should be time limited. The housing task force should never have been allowed to exist for 20 years. All right, I hear my time is up.
Thanks, Peter. Katie.
Hi, I just wanted to chime in here.
Katie, could you please say who you are?
Sorry, Katie Troutz with Montpelier Alive. I just wanted to chime in here to say that I've been thinking about this along with my board of directors for quite some time. There are so many challenges in the downtown right now. And I have been thinking that some of those are just, have been just too much for one small organization to tackle. I'm thinking of the increased storefront vacancies. I'm thinking of drawing business to downtown after one flood of possibly many. And I'm thinking also about drawing big business to town, what we need to see to see change. And I only, I have a very small staff, and the board is not a working board. So I did talk to Pellon about my feeling that there needs to be more attention on downtown and economic development, and it would be very useful to have partners in that. I agree that the scope needs to be narrowed down. There's so many directions that we could go in. But I also have confidence that if we had the right partners at the table, that we could, we could implement so much more than if it were only the city or only Montpelier Alive addressing many of these things, or if we were working in silos. So I think we do need to bring some people to the table. I think it's a heavy lift. It's a big lift. There, there are a lot of directions that could go in. But I know that I've been feeling like I need support as a Montpelier Alive director from more partners and more vision for which direction to go in. So I'm in favor of it. I also agree it's much longer, a longer journey than a six month journey. But I, I hear what Pellon's saying, that this would be a way to get started and potentially use the six months to identify the right partners to bring to the table. And potentially, this committee then gets carried forward by another entity. I know Montpelier Alive had, has also been thinking about an economic vitality committee, which is very common for downtown organizations to have. And if we weren't to hold it, at least we'd want to be at the table.
Thanks, Katie. As, as the idea is, is before, put before us, the proposal is that the membership would include three city councilors, one representative from Montpelier Alive, and also some number of local business owners and community members. So by its nature, it would require us to create this body and then ask for volunteers and make the appointments. And so that might address some of your concern, Josh, or Ben, because maybe the time it takes to do that would, would move us into a time where we might have a new person in the community development office.
And if council wants us, like we can approve this, I don't want to use comedian, like entity, then we can just like, three of us with Katie, like four of us, like Sal, Adrian, me and Katie, work on like all the details. Then we can update the city council what we come up, like, oh, maybe we will not call, membership, maybe we will call collaborators, so it will not create like a formal or the scope will be more specific for six months. Because it's just a draft, right? Just the, you know, the first step of the initiative. So I'm happy to do that if everybody is like okay with it. So just revise it, restructure, update you, then start working. Because I mentioned here, the work will start in August, so we still have time.
If I could just offer one other suggestion too. I think it would actually be valuable as you have these conversations and you think about the scope of work to talk about, to talk with members of the Montpelier Development Corporation, right? Which existed and no longer exists, just like lessons learned.
I do.
Yeah, oh, good, good, good. All right, great.
It is good being alike, yeah.
All right, so do we have a motion?
Should I?
Or do you want to come back and do a motion after you met with?
I want to make the motion so we can start working, if it is okay.
Yep.
And again, like, the plan is to start collaboration in August. So we, it will give us like a one month to revise, restructure everything. Then you can see it before we start working with groups. Okay, so I move that city council approve the formation of an economic development subcommittee for a period of six months, beginning August 2025 and ending February 2025. Oh, six. Oh, my God, yeah, 2026. Yeah, sorry.
And that we would appoint you and Councilor Zalfano and Gil to the committee?
Yeah, and that too. Thanks.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving on to city council committee assignments. Is that you?
Sure, yeah. So at your seats, there's a listing, there's a spreadsheet in the packet that's a little, got everything in it. So it's, um, it's pretty big, yeah, that's the one. Yeah. So what we did do is just, just for ease, we did go ahead and just print out sort of a version that would just give you sort of the committee in the meeting time, just to sort of align with your schedule. And so what we thought is we could, you know, take volunteers for these committees. Before we get started, one of the things that I just wanted to mention, two things. One, they sent around an email just on our work on the committees and committees with a couple of just short term assignments. So I just want to mention that to review certain committees. So ADA was on that list, MEAC, homelessness restroom committee in terms of a report out, arts commission, housing, and then transportation and complete streets. And so what I'll do as a follow up to that is just provide an introduction to the chair and then, you know, just sort of get people started in those conversations and then get a report back. And so for tonight, I was kind of thinking that we might maybe just go with what we've got there for right now. But if there are people that are interested and maybe serving permanently on a particular committee, they might just say so, just so there's not any confusion. And so I don't know if I'm going to tip that off.
So that's good. So let's just go down the list. ADA advisory committee.
Sorry, Jack, can we just clarify exactly what we're doing right now? Are we talking about the ones where we're having conversations with the committees that are in flux and reporting back to the council, or are we doing committee assignments?
We're doing committee assignments.
Great, thank you.
And obviously, some of the, some things could change.
Yep, great.
ADA advisory committee is one of those committees that traditionally meets during the business day. So that's something that, anyone considering volunteering should know. Great. Cemetery commission?
Can I ask you another question, Jack? Is the expectation that every committee is going to have a council representative on it?
We kind of like that idea. We've certainly had years where we had vacancies. Because everybody.
Isn't the cemetery commission elected?
This is a liaison?
Yeah.
Oh, this is a liaison that they want.
We could leave it open. I don't know that we historically have had an assignment.
Yeah.
Pass that one?
Yeah.
The community advisory board.
That's with the Justice Center, so we may want to hold on that one.
Oh, that's right, because Justice Center, so, yep.
For making quick work of this list.
Community fund board.
That's, that's the board that reviews nonprofit requests that.
Yeah. There's not a council representative on it now.
It's just a full list of all committees.
Conservation commission, do we ordinarily have someone on that?
Not historically, we do Alec works with that group. So if somebody was interested, I'm sure they would have a liaison, but you don't necessarily have to.
And the same with DRB and design review committee.
Jack, can I, I think you skipped Complete Streets committee.
Oh, I did, sorry. Very good.
Are they going to be combined with somebody?
Transportation. So what's, what's up for discussion as with Complete Streets and transportation? Is whether or not you want to merge them or eliminate transportation potentially just based on the, you know, work that's being done there?
Right, that is one of the questions. There is the transportation infrastructure committee, complete streets committee. There's kind of a lot of overlap.
Yeah, I thought that somebody, they're going to do this, one of those should be eliminated or a title that combines them both.
Yep.
Transportation and streets or something.
Well, I've been doing transportation, so I've been doing streets and they're combined.
You would be on both. Great. So that means you're also on transportation infrastructure. You're on two, that gets you too, until you take action. Yep. Energy advisory committee? You want to keep doing it? The grant committee? So that might be one of those committees that we should put into the review process to decide whether we should keep going with it. But, but for now, it's still you. Senior center advisory council. Jim, you're already there.
Yep, I'm already there.
You even have the T-shirt.
Yep. Wore it for the annual meeting yesterday.
Historic preservation commission. Is that another one of those that we don't put someone on, right? Homelessness task force.
I'd like to see that combined with housing, and I would chair that and tell them that they would have their own segment in the meeting. I'd like to talk to both groups and see if we can't bring them together.
Well, and that's under, that's one of the things that we're reviewing.
Yeah.
So.
Put me down for that one then, homeless.
Okay.
Well, he can step off if he wants.
I'm wondering, you know, I would, I, I just want to throw out there that like that is actually, of all the committees, probably the one I'm most interested in serving on. And I'm going to have to serve on it with you, Jim.
Homelessness or housing?
Well, housing. And whether or not homelessness is compounded with housing, but like.
Yep.
And I recognize other people who might want to serve on housing too. I would like to participate in those powers.
Yep. Carrie?
Yeah, I'm on the housing committee now. I would love to stay on it. And I, I don't think it's a great idea to combine housing and homelessness. And so I would love us to answer that question first before we decide how we're going to move on. So do we have, do we have a process for that?
We do. That's part of the committee review process. Investment committee, that's proposed to get begun, right?
That's eliminated, yeah.
Yeah. Parks commission, that's a, is that a liaison?
Yes.
And is somebody even doing that?
I don't know. We've had one historically. I know that.
They got quite a good group.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think we.
They're independent, they're elected.
I don't think they need one. I met them all when they were up at the meeting, and they were, they got a really solid one.
And planning commission, again, not, not something we would send someone to. Public art commission, did we already vote to get rid of that?
No, it's under review.
It's under review, yeah.
So if we can serve on this, I'd love to serve if we do, which we should.
And Ben?
Well, I was going to say, I was, I've had a couple of conversations with people on that about a path forward. And I'd be happy to continue to be a part of those conversations and if appropriate, serve on it or not. But I'd be happy to have a conversation about what it looks like moving forward.
I'll make sure that you're on the list.
So, Peyton and Ben.
Put you on for now, yeah.
And Ben. If we continue to have this commission, Ben and I want to serve on it.
Recreation advisory board.
Another one of those, Ben?
We don't, yeah.
I am on there, but I can't, I can't attend. I've never been able to attend at that, Ben.
So you shouldn't be on it anymore.
No. I'm like, just take me off.
You're, you're setting yourself up.
I set myself up for failure. I, it's a really bad time for me, so can't do it.
Does anyone want to step up or not?
I would.
Okay. Restroom committee?
So I'm on that one currently, and I think that's one that's also under review.
Okay. So stay on it until we decide what to do? C-Jack, that's one that's dormant and may go away. Stormwater utility commission is already on hold. Tree, Sal is still on M-TIC tree board. If you like to get out and with your shovel and plant trees.
What, do we typically have a?
No.
Yeah, I would, I'd love to serve on the tree board.
Great. Bring, bring the kids. Bring, bring the kids to help plant trees.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A younger person should show up.
Youth Committee?
Yeah, I want to, yeah, I want to continue.
City Manager Transition Subcommittee, well, we're going to get a presentation about what happens next with that. Sanctuary City ICE Ad-Hoc Committee?
I think it's Ash Cherry.
Uh huh. Economic Development Subcommittee, we just created it. Evelyn, Sal, and Adrian. And Childcare Task Force.
We didn't have that here.
You win.
That's me.
Okay.
And Jack, while it's not a, it's not an official committee of the, of the city, but, you know, I do continue to serve on the Montpelier Commission for Recovery and Resilience, and would, you know, just like Lauren had served as a liaison.
Yep.
To the council, I'd like to continue in that role.
Yeah, I think that's great.
Thanks.
So is Lauren, what, was Lauren a member of the commission?
She was, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there was no conflict of interest or anything, right?
I, I don't think so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just to be sure.
And she continues to serve on the commission.
Yeah, that's what I noticed.
I want to go back, can we go back to Housing? Because before then, you know, first interest, we had two people that wanted to be on, Kerry and I. That was put in, I don't know, in one of the things there that, that little chart that had the colors and everything. You know, I don't, you know, three is kind of overkill, I think, to be honest with you.
Well, and that is being studied, it's part of the review, including whether that's going to be merged with homelessness, so.
I'd like to be still considered for that, because I put in for that, you know, way back.
Okay.
Actually, totally agree.
And then there are a couple of other things that I don't see on here, but one of them is the Wood Art Gallery Board, which we, that typically is the, is the mayor, and I'm willing to continue serving on that. And the other is the Harry Sheridan Scholarship Committee. Which I think they just do, do it like once a year, right? Around the time they're getting out the scholarships.
Yeah, that's once a year, and I've done it the past two years.
Yeah. Great. Wow, very productive, guys. Good work.
Hey, Jack?
Yes.
Before we move on, can I just make one suggestion? So I talked to Kelly about this, and when we had our meeting about the committees on committees, on committees, whatever, whatever we talked about restructuring the committees, my process improvement brain, like sparked interest, and I wanted to bring this up to council to see if you all would support this, and if Kelly would support this with staff to maybe have a, to utilize Alex Geller, who's in District Three, he's a resident of Montpelier, he works for the state of Vermont, he came and presented to council, offered his volunteer time to help automate some processes within the city, to relieve staff time of administrative burden, so they can focus on more important things. And I would like to, I've talked to him, and he is open to this, to maybe use the committee process as like a pilot, to see if we could reduce some of the administrative burden, the paperwork, the probably extreme amount of emails that go back and forth to committee chairs, to scheduling, to producing reports, just to make it easier for city, to see if staff would be open to that, we can create a process to make, you know, to pilot a process improvement process using this topic as, you know, an example, to see what we could do, if they like it or not. If they don't like it, they don't have to do it. But I just wanted to throw that out to council to see if, if that's something that would be okay, and if, I've talked to Kelly about this, and to see if the staff would be okay working with us, with Alex and I, and if anyone else would be interested.
So if Kelly is okay to try it?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
I do, what we talked about specifically, well, I mean, I'm sure other people come out of it, but one of the things that came to mind was just really trying to work with the forms and the application process, and making sure that that's a little, it's more streamlined and more automated, so it's not, you know, because it is a lift for staff, and so if we could make those improvements, I think it would be great, and we're happy to have the help.
Great. Steve?
I'll be brief. I've noticed that there's a number of meetings in the city calendar for upcoming meetings that have no agendas, so basically they're being automatically programmed to First and Third, Monday or Wednesday or whatever, and then they're not happening, agendas don't go out, meetings don't get worn, and it's just cluttering up the calendar, and it's confusing. Also, in this discussion belongs a question of, let's consider a policy where we just record all the meetings and we make sure there's something more than a laptop. Complete Streets, it's, it's not much of a, we need an owl in any room, an owl is a device that properly records in panorama, and it triggers, it's, it's a very good and affordable device, and it makes a better recording, but the recordings can, can catch ideas that get fleeting or ignored by tension, you know? None that, none that I could imagine, having ever said. And AI can pull minutes together without, AI is a brilliant tool for pulling minutes together, it can find actions and, and then, you could, you still need to check them before you approve them, okay? I'm, I'm not arguing that, but these are, these are ideas that could simplify our staffing problems, but it does necessitate thinking through use of an owl and, and a policy that even if it's an advisory committee, it still should record so that we know whether they're productive or not.
Yeah, I think using an owl is, is very, is, is much better than talking into a laptop, yeah. Peter? Oh, you're muted.
Am I unmuted?
Now you're unmuted.
Okay. I think working with Alex Geller is a great idea, there's some obvious ways to cut down on the amount of staff time, just for example, if we, we have to note, we have to have open meeting rules, we have to post things, we have to post agendas and so forth, you just had a format, and every committee chair was responsible for sending it to Evelyn, and Evelyn could post it. That's just once, you don't, you don't need a, a staff person for each committee to do that separately, and if Evelyn was posting it for everybody and had a, an inputting that, that standardized it, you wouldn't have the problem that Steve just referred to, because it would be clear, you need to have your agenda, et cetera. The second thing is, I've been a member of a number of committees, and I've been to a lot of committee meetings, I think you ought to, you ought to be asking each committee to say whether or not they feel that they need or want a staff person, because staff people, it can be a waste of staff time, or staff people can have a stranglehold on the committee. I was part of the, I was a founding member and, and chair of C-Jack when it was started, and the staff person there was constantly telling us, no, we can't do that, no, we shouldn't do that, and it was a message straight from Bill, and it was very, very disruptive and disheartening. So there are committees that probably do not want a staff person, and they should not be forced to have a staff person. I think this whole thing about getting rid of committees because of the staff overload is, is not quite the point. Take a closer look at where staff are needed and where they're not needed.
Thanks, Peter. I think, I think there's more discussion to be had on that point, for instance, you're saying that there are committees that should want to, that probably want to have their own direction and not even be staffed, and we've heard Jim another time saying, every committee we appoint should be taking direction from the council on, on what they do, and so there's different, definitely different points of view, but we'll, we'll get to that. I think we're good to move on. City Command, next up, we have item 11, reappointment to the Conservation Commission, we have one applicant, is there a second?
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor, signif, and just to be clear, the applicant is Paul Marangello, or Marangelo, to the Conferenceation, Conservation Committee, and he's someone who's already on, on it. So it's moved and seconded to reappoint him, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Council reports, start on your end.
So I have one update for the council about youth committee, because of the school year, youth committee decided to take a break, so there will be no monthly meetings until September, then when they come back to school, we will start meeting again, and I shared our annual report and our meeting notes for your information, and you have all the details about what we did. I think it was a very efficient year for us, we start meeting in February, then we meet every month, I think one month we have to cancel, other than that, we meet monthly. Lessons learned, I think for the future of the youth committee, I think I need to work on some kind of handbook, or like, I don't know, process, something like that, because they are new in all this like public meeting, municipal government, so it would be great if they have some kind of handbook or manual to follow, because members will be different in, in two years, so I just want to give this update. Thank you.
There might be some available from the city, from the Secretary of State's office, might be worth looking at that.
Yeah, so for the manual or?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
And it wouldn't be specific to kids probably, but to public bodies in general. Ben?
Just two things, one, I wanted to say, like, I'm really happy about the Turtle Island today, right? It feels like a really like hopeful, good decision for our city, and it just feels good. And then the second thing I want to say is, yesterday, met with Secretary Hurley from the Agency of Commerce, Community Development, with members of the, from the Montpelier Commission, we met with Government Service Agency around the federal building, still negotiating with them time around due diligence, and trying to get them to share the information that they already have about the condition of the building. We're successful in that, and we'll be reviewing that. Would say it's frankly challenging with the state of the federal agencies right now, it's, it's, it's a journey, but I really want to say that I'm appreciative of the secretary and the agency for stepping up in this way, and then tomorrow, we're actually meeting, briefing congressional delegation, their staff, just to update them on our experience working in GSA.
Great.
I just want to say, yesterday, the, we had the Montpelier Senior Center annual meeting, very well done, nice meal, nice speeches, a lot of the emphasis is on Feast and how that's going to go forward, I was, you know, told to go speak on the microphone because a question was asked, how does the council feel about Feast, and I was the only one there, so I spoke for myself, but I didn't really feel comfortable speaking for the whole council, but, you know, they, they were concerned how we feel about it, so I, I gave my position, got some applause, so I think that, and my position was, I don't think we want to get rid of it, we're going to find a way to make it better, but this is a, would be a black eye on the city if we lost it, so. The other thing is, I have a question about the parade and the July 3rd thing, is there a shuttle, because it's, you look on the thing, and it, one thing says one and one thing says another, and I don't know whether the Montpelier Alive one is the one to look at, or the one that the city sent out, is there a shuttle going from National Life down to Taylor Street?
I need to check on it just to be sure.
Okay. Because it says it in the one the city sent out, but not in, and the Montpelier Alive one, I don't know if Katie's still here, but it needs to be updated, because three of us can't even march in this, that's Adrian, Ben, and me, we're not even listed. Huh? Well, no, I'm just saying, we, we can't, because we're not even listed as councilors, they still got Tim Heaney and Lauren and Donna Bay.
Well, I'll, that'll be, that'll be in my report.
We all, oh, he didn't know, we always have, do we still do that? In my time, we always marched in the parade as a council, we're, we're right near the be, we're usually near the beginning of the pack, so we can be done and then circle back and watch the rest of the parade.
Okay. Yeah, Sal, you're up. Carrie?
I just wanted to apologize for my outburst earlier, as a member of the public, it was disrespectful to, the public was disrespectful to the entire council and to you, Mr. Mayor, so I apologize.
Quite right. Adrian?
Nothing to report, tonight.
Right. Mayor's report is, yes, we are, we have a spot in the parade, we, if, if you can be in the parade, it's, Alex, Carrie, you're going to be out of town sadly, but, but it is fun, we have a banner that we carry, and we get to see our friends and family and little kids, and the city clerk knows where the banner is, and, well, you did last year, and so I, I have great confidence in you finding it, and I, I sent you the email that tells us where to be and stuff, but we line up right on Winter Street or someplace, and good time, it's a kickoff to what I always think is a great event in, in Montpelier, people love our Independence Day celebration, and hope for good weather. City Clerk's report. City Manager's report.
Just a couple items that I wanted to mention, so earlier today, Tony Chapers, our HR director, sent an email about the city manager search consultant coming to a meeting, and so what we're proposing is that we would have a meeting on the 16th of July, because it could be, it's like, hope that that works for folks, just to make sure we have a standalone item to discuss that process and what that looks like. So we would start at, start at 6:30, but what I'd like to do also is bring forward a presentation on the capital improvement, so in a way back machine, we used to have two meetings, we'd have one around budget time, and we'd have one around this time, and I think it would be really important to make sure that we bring that back forward, so I would be proposing that we probably convene that at 5:30. Actually, incidentally, thinking about our committee list, I don't know that we have the Capital Improvement Committee on that list.
No. We'll get, we'll, we'll get that fixed.
We will certainly fix that.
Right.
So I'll add those two to the list, for sure, but anyway, just wanted to put that out there in terms of making sure that, you know, we, if, if that works, then we'll move ahead with getting that scheduled up for you. And then the next thing that I just wanted to mention briefly, there's actually two things, there's always a list, so the second thing is the Strategic Planning Workshop that we had a couple weeks ago, last week. Thank you, everyone, for a good event, we do have follow-up to do, and so I haven't had a chance yet to send a follow-up email, but my plan is that we'll take the, the other two goals that we didn't build out, so we have housing, and, well, actually, we built out housing, so we'd be looking at economic development. so we'd be looking at Economic Development and Infrastructure. And so we'd be building those out. I want you to see sort of using Housing as a model and what was put up on the boards and take a look at that in review. And then the next thing would be building out the other two items that we prioritized based on the strategies within the strategic plan and also getting staff input. So I'll put that all together and then send it out for you to take a look at. And hopefully, we could have our first additional workshop on the 9th with a hope towards sort of approving that strategic plan on the 23rd. So just to keep us kind of moving along, and I hope that that's agreeable in terms of timeline for that opening. Perfect. And then the last thing that I want to just say is, we did meet with the Police Union this week, and we are in verbal agreement, which I'll be bringing to council with terms. And so I'm incredibly thankful for that, for the team that worked on that with me. And then also, thank you to DPW too for, you know, working through the process. And so we'll bring those terms to you hopefully on the night.
Thanks, Kelly. And thanks for your great work on dealing with all the unions. All right, that will be it. 9:39, and we are adjourned.